I'd like to call our Board of County Commission meeting to order. This morning, the invocation will be led by our good friend Leo Granger, if you'll come up, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Adams Act. All rise if you're able to do so.
Oh heavenly Father, we come once again, giving you all the thanks and all the glory, Lord. Lord, you act sure to be in this meeting with us, that we'll govern ourselves accordingly, Lord. Lord, like to follow the agenda and be in a great mind. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Granger, Mr. Adams Act, thank you. Next item of business is our approval of the minutes as stated in the agenda.
Move approval.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Adams Act. Further discussion on the motion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. And we're now at nine oh five, we're going to recess the Board of County Commission meeting, go straight into our Port Authority, we're going to open up the Port Authority, and we don't have any minutes to approve. Is there any public comment on Port Authority items only at this time? Okay, seeing no public comment on Port Authority items, is there any general discussion amongst the commissioners? Mr. Turner, you have the floor, sir.
The other day, we had a meeting that was the stakeholders for the dredging of the barge port area out in, that the Port Authority owns, and I think that we need to not only monitor that closely, like I'm sure we're going to do, I think we need to start looking at possible expansion of the area as we go through this process, so I just wanted to kind of bring that up today for a little short, just a little short explanation, but I think we need to start looking into those possibilities at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, Mr. Adams Act.
Yeah, in reference to the same meeting, I think it was a really good meeting. I wish it would have been a little better attended, but I will say this. I like that idea of having a larger port or a larger footprint, or maybe places to store things if they come into the port, that type of thing, and I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, Mr. Turner, but that definitely needs to be part of the foresight if we're going to make it a port. And the one thing that I just want to bring up, and I guess I'd like to have an official answer and see if we can set some sort of timeline on it, is how deep that pipe is that comes into the river. If we can get an answer on that at some point, I'd really appreciate it. If I have to put that in email, let me know, but I guess I'm officially asking that question.
Mr. Rawls, I know your light doesn't work, but I'll try to look for your button.
Yeah, I've been saying it for years, we don't have enough room in the port to do anything that's meaningful. We can deepen it, we can dredge it and widen that approach coming in, but until you have some way of actually being able to offload, store, and move out. And I've looked at and been to many ports in America, literally on the western coast and on the eastern coast, and we look nothing at all like a typical port, obviously, land size. So I would say if there's an opportunity for us to be able to acquire land that would be adjacent to there, we should try to do so, but I don't know that there's anything that's not being utilized right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make.
Mr. Turner, you may.
Yeah, please. You know, in addition to the expansion, one thing that we need to start maybe looking at would be the land, I think it's to the north of the existing docking area where it's a wetland area, but if we could mitigate that wetland and expand the unloading area into there, that's just an idea. It doesn't necessarily mean it would be able to be done, but that's another thing to look at while we're looking at this. So if the other efforts they're working on become viable, then that could be a possible expansion area, possibly.
Well, and I agree, let me say, I think that meeting was a very good meeting that we had. I want to thank Sam, is he in the room? Thank you for putting that together, Mr. Suggs, appreciate it very much. You know, one thing it showed us, it did show us some deficiencies, but it also showed us some opportunities. And with that, we can move forward, and I think we can find the partners that we have. We had some in the room that we could make that port very up to date and modern. So it's going to take us probably having a workshop, thinking outside the box, and trying to move that forward. And Mr. Adams Act will get that answer for you before that workshop, so you'll have that information. I'm sure somebody has to have it, probably DEP would have it more than anybody would at this point. Okay, is there any further discussion on Port Authority items? Okay, we're going to.
Real quick, I've got on the splash pad.
Okay.
We've got a couple engineers that have come to the table. There is a large difference in engineering costs anywhere from roughly eight thousand to roughly three thousand dollars. The lower cost engineer was the one who actually designed the splash pad. There might be a conflict right now with whether or not the splash pad even meets the DOH, Department of Health requirements, by not having a urinal in the bathroom that's adjacent to it. So we're trying to get that figured out, because the design that was done, at the very top of it, it says this design does not comply with Department of Health regulations. I know, so we're trying to work around that part of it. And I just fired back an email and told them we'll look at seeing what it takes to put a urinal in.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls, for bringing that to our attention.
I have one.
Mr. Pickens.
The Triangle Park is the port, right, Port Authority?
I think it is.
Okay, so anyway, yesterday, we had a Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, and there will be a recommendation coming to Julianne, I think it's the August tenth, you know, workshop, to make a recommendation for the location of the pickleball courts out of that facility.
All right, thank you very much. Any further items, commissioners, on Port Authority? Hearing none, we're going to close our Port Authority, reopen our Board of County Commission meeting, and our first presentation will be the Jenkins family. And before we go there, I want to mention a big thanks to Charles Thornton in the back of the room, if you'll wave your hand back there. This man does incredible work with, if you'll stand up, nobody can see you there. Okay, this man did the signs, he does the signs around Putnam County. And, you know, he's not just a sign man, he's an artist, and he did a great job on what you're fixing to see. And thank you very much for your work and your effort on getting these done as quick as you did, and we appreciate it, okay? Mr. Leo Granger, you're back up, I'm going to ask you to bring the Jenkins family up, and I want you to say a few things, and then we're going to bring, oh, before we do that on your, as you're coming up, I do want to mention the mayor of Inalaken, person's in the room. Councilwoman Meadows is in the room, and council chairperson Connor's in the room. And if you'll come up with the family too, since we're going to do that, and then we'll meet you down there in a few minutes. But I've asked Leo to, Leo and private first class Robert H. Jenkins, Jr., were friends, youngsters together, and I'd like for him to share some of what he feels led to share about today before we go to this presentation.
Thank you, Larry, for giving me a thirty minute notice that I would be speaking on this. I really appreciate that.
Hey, that's not unusual for this group, I'm telling you.
Usually it's five minutes, it's five minutes.
I won't say I'm unprepared, but I don't have my notes, so I really don't need any notes. Robert Jenkins was throwing distance from where I grew up at, which my home was right on the corner of where the bait and tack place where it is now in Inalaken, and which now is lawyer Kaiser office was my home in nineteen fifty-two, that's where I got my first spanking. However, Robert Jenkins lived throwing distance of a rock, but you dare not throw a rock, because the whole community that then raised kids, and you lot to get two beatings, one there and one when you get home. Robert Jenkins had a big, big heart, he also was an artist, because he carved different things, and we had a, he carved like an African type with the thick lips. And he carved a stick in Vietnam, and that was brought home by Melman Smith fifty years later, and the task was whoever was on the last of the hill, where Robert gave his heroic and gave his life to save a fellow soldier, you know, and the fellow soldier was Fred. Fred was from New York, you know Robert was in the great city of Inalaken, the lake city. So they didn't grow up together. They met on this special twelve man team to go out and recon. And Robert was operating the machine gun during that timeframe, it took two machine gun, two people operating them gun, and when Robert discovered Fred was down, he covered him, he shielded him. So I take my hat off to Robert, I take my hat off to all the vets in the county, city, and state. There's just so much I can say about Robert, went to Central Academy, he was on the track team, set records very fast, he was in the backfield motion football team. He was a senior brother of the Jenkins girl, he had one other brother that lives in Gainesville now, which is a vet, you know. Speeches, Larry, you believe that? Tommy Jenkins, Seaberry, can't remember the guy in East Valaka, and Willie Jane Douglas was the relay track team at Central Academy, and they set records. Robert would give the shirt off his back to you. I remember one thing that I get off the mic, Margaret, in Inalaken, it was kind of closed in. So maybe a mile and a half, Margaret Livingston, which was Margaret Williams then, got her for one area and had to walk in the dark through the woodland to get to where she lived at. When Robert discovered that, he would wait for her, for her ride, and walk her every afternoon, Monday through Friday. That was the type of guy he was, you know, he always gave his time up for you. So I'mma close with that, I have many other stories, but I won't prolong this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. And I want to bring to mind for the audience to know that Mr. Granger brought this to our attention a few months back, maybe three to four months ago, about naming County Road three fifteen, parts of it in the town of Inalaken after PFC Robert H. Jenkins, Jr. And this board was, they didn't even question it, they didn't even ask questions, we just went ahead and did it. And because we wanted to honor those who deserved to be honored. And I appreciate all these people I work with, all these commissioners, and I appreciate you and the family. And commissioners, if we'll go down to the unveiling, we'll do that right now, so.
While you're going down to unveil, I'd like to make one other comment. We do do a Robert Jenkins scholarship banquet and give a scholarship to Inalaken High School, two scholarships, and that's done on Armful Day weekend. Prior to the covert, my intention was to honor and acknowledge all the vets in this surrounding area at that banquet. And let me do it again, that's what I've intended, to acknowledge vets in the area. Thank you.
Did you get all the, and all of them? Now, families, on behalf of the Board of County Commission, this resolution stating what we've done for that, okay, signed by all the commissioners in this report. And Leo will not leave you out, okay? So everybody gathering, come on, we're going to give a real pledge, pledge up in person. You tell us what you want to do.
Uh, more toward the, but don't. I'm a little short, so I'm sorry.
Let's give them a round of applause. Now again, if you notice, the green sign will be on County Road three fifteen, and the brown signs will be also down on County Road three fifteen by Grand and Lake Shores, depicting how you can get into Sister Springs Baptist Cemetery, where Robert H. Jenkins is buried at, and his memorial's there. So thank you again, Charles, for the great work that you did, and appreciate you very much for that. And this is probably the best part of our job, is when we can honor those that deserve to be honored. And thank you, commissioners. The next presentation will be National Parks and Recreation Month proclamation, but before I call on Commissioner Pickens to read that, I think Kevin Stevens would like to show us a quick video. Mr. Granger, you left your papers up here on the, your whole personal life is probably sitting there.
Thank you. Jacob said this was going to be very easy, and all I had to do was hit a button, and I don't know that I believe him.
That's all Jacob had to do.
Yes, sir, exactly. Yes, sir, in accordance with National Parks and Recreation Month, we thought we had show the citizens in the county kind of what we have done previously as well over the last year, even though understanding COVID was in effect, we still got quite a bit of things accomplished. And so I'd like to thank the commission for giving us the opportunity this morning to at least present a few things to you. This is our story of what we've done over the past year. Again, some of the maintenance projects that we got to accomplish, we got to take care of some things that have been on the back burner for a while, and take care of a lot of projects that we don't ordinarily get the time for. The maintenance staff did a great job of keeping up with not only their day to day activities, but also going above and beyond and taking care of quite a few other things as well. That means we also continue to take care of the boat ramps, Pico Road, Brown's Landing, things like that, that we also have responsibilities for. We started a new project, Mary Lynn's in the audience with us, the floor home building restoration. You can tell that this was the COVID days still, because we were all wearing our masks and everything. So even during that, we still got the opportunity to start a new project and proceed with it. We also had the Veterans Park reopening, as you can remember from it, a nice beautiful day after all that work was done, and we got to open that back up to the public as well. Some of the special events that we took care of during COVID over the last year that had a direct impact on so many citizens was we created the Wreck-It bags, and inside these bags, knowing that all the kids were stuck at home and couldn't get out and do things, we created these bags and stuffed them with some little books and reading materials and games and stuff like that, so that they would have something to do at home, also to help the parents occupy those children while they were at home for so often. We found and took advantage of a new program called Parking Lot Bingo. So the seniors, instead of coming into the senior center as they would normally do and conduct bingo, we got a P A system and a microphone, and we conducted bingo out in the parking lot. And then the people would either honk or wave their hands, and that's how we would conduct the bingo things. We also conducted a movie in the park. It's hard to see from this photo, but we did take some spray paint, Joe and the maintenance guys, and we put some six foot wide circles around to keep everybody socially distanced and everything, but we still got to go and see a movie in the park last October, and it was very well attended. You remember last year, we also started with a big hole in the ground, and now we actually do have the first county splash pad out near Project Play. That was part of the renovation project with it, you remember the old wooden buildings and everything, the wooden side that we had, and then the transformation that took place with it. Of course, with the help of one of our partners Rotary Club, you know, which was so instrumental in helping us with that. Athletics, we did continue on, we had to cancel some springs activities that were going on. Of course, we closed the pool last summer, but then we started back up in the fall with a modified soccer program. And so we were still able to get the kids out and have some soccer going on. We proceeded forward into the winter with our T-ball program, had some T-ball and baseball going on. Then we moved right into the spring with our flag football program, which was also very well attended. And we also conducted our spring beach volleyball session here in town. Meanwhile, in South Putnam, we had our first ever flag football season there, and that was a great success, just to have enough people to show up to make teams. And they had an overwhelming success in their volleyball program as well. We opened the pool back up this year in May, and so we've been conducting Aqua Zumba classes and some water aerobics classes. We've been conducting swim lessons for the kids, parent and child, levels one through four. And then we, of course, we had a couple of graduations already. And we've also conducted our lifeguard recertification training to keep all of the lifeguards up to date on their certifications and their training as well. So as you can see, some of the great results that we've had, the department specifically touched over five hundred children, that's what we had in our programs alone. And then you had their families and the other siblings involved, and you're well over a couple of thousand people that our department specifically impacted. The aquatic center, we're going to have probably between a hundred and a hundred and twenty kids that are going to go through our swim lessons programs. We're going to have the Aqua Zumba classes throughout the rest of the summer. So again, those are direct impacts as well. Some of the indirect contacts and support that we've had is partnerships with groups like the Placa Bay Ruth Program, the Merrill's U Sports Association, working with our staff down in South Putnam. You're easily over, just from their programs, over a thousand children that they've had that are on county parks, on county facilities, that are being able to conduct their programs as well. And then, of course, through seniors programs with the Inalaken Community Center, and Joni and her volunteers that work out there, the Boswick Community Center that we have, of course, the Edgar Johnson Senior Center that we have here in town. All of those are back up and running and getting rentals and getting people to come back in and conducting classes as well. So as you can see from this very brief slideshow, this was just a huge impact. COVID impacted us greatly, but we were able to overcome and then make successes out of all of those possible obstacles that we could have had. We know that our numbers are still slightly down from previous years, but we're very comfortable that we're going to be able to move forward. And so Putnam County's Parks and Recreation story is continuing to expand and to reach more citizens, which is what we want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. And we've asked our Parks and Recreation Chairman of the committee to bring our proclamations to Commissioner Pickens, if you will.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Harvey, and it's been my honor to serve as the chairman of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for the last three years. And I do want to recognize Ms. Mary Lynn Pendanita, if you'll just stand, and then Ms. Jimmy Simons, I think, two of our members, and thank you for all the work that you do in your areas and on being on the board. So we thank you so much. Proclamation as July is Parks and Recreation Month, proclamation twenty twenty-one dash zero forty-two. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout the country, including Putnam County, Florida, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through the increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of the community, and whereas Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, and provide vegetated buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Putnam County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Putnam County, done, ordered, and adopted this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of this proclamation. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of this proclamation.
Proper motion by Commissioner Pickens, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Kevin.
If I could, sir, we've invited the staff as well. If I may introduce some of them as well, our maintenance team. If anybody could come on down.
Yeah, have them come up, Kevin, if you would. And while they're coming up, I just want to say, I know he mentioned a lot about Parks and Recreation, but Kevin and his staff is responsible for over 230 acres of parkland, including 19 parks, 15 boat ramps, four community centers, and one aquatic facility. So, it's a lot to take care of, and we're really blessed to have those facilities in Putnam County. And thank you, Kevin, and your staff.
Yes, sir, thank you. If I could take a moment to mention everyone, Jimmy and Mary Lynn from our Recreation Advisory Board, very instrumental in helping us move the parks and the programs forward. And our maintenance staff, Joe, the maintenance manager, and of course, Brian and Victor and Terry. Those are the guys that are actually out there getting the work done. Katrina, our office manager, who keeps us all in line. And then, our very brand-new Recreation Manager for Athletics and Aquatics, Paige Neely, has joined us in the month of June. So, this is the staff that we have.
All right, why don't you come up front? We're going to get a picture. Come on, guys, join in. We'll put Julian down. Get it off.
We used to.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and your staff, for the great work that's being done. A lot happens in Parks and Recreation in Putnam County. Point of privilege here, because the next one, we left off the agenda on purpose. I'm going to ask Mike Troxell if you'll come down front, please. And we're going to honor someone who's fixing to retire, someone I've known for over 42 years. We worked together at Pantry Pride Grocery Store, two doors down, right here in the plaza. And who would think that we ended our career, or going to end our career? Maybe his career is ending, I don't know about mine yet, but it might be soon. Forty-two years that we've known each other, and I was telling his family this morning, I've never heard him get upset, I've never seen him get upset. I'm sure it's probably in there, but I don't want to see it. He's one of those kind gentlemen that just, you know, he'll walk away before he gets upset. So, Mr. Troxell, you have the floor, and you can do your honor, okay?
Well, thank you, thank you, commissioners. Roger, can you come down?
Bring your family, Roger. Bring the whole family with you.
While they're walking down here, Mr. Westbury has been part of Putnam County for a little over 15 years now. And he's going to be retiring here within the month. He is part of the dynamic duo, what I call, of our sign shop. And the other one was recognized today for his work on the signs here. But I did a quick search on the number of signs that Putnam County has, and it's well north of 10,000 signs that these guys go throughout the county and maintain on a daily basis. And Roger, I haven't... We've known each other for about a year now, since this has been here. But he does a great job for us. They both do tremendous work for our county. And I think you mainly work on the south side, if I remember right. So, all those signs down there, there's a lot of them down there as well. But Roger is just, he's just a stalwart with us. He's there every day, he works hard, he's in his truck. How many miles you've driven throughout the county in those 15 years? But it's a lot. So, I want to thank you personally for your dedication to this county.
Don't be scared, we don't bite, I promise.
But this is a plaque presented to Roger Westbury for 15 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County. Again, thank you very much. Absolutely, we can get a picture, so.
Roger, why don't you introduce your family?
That's my daughter. My son-in-law Zach, my grandson Camden, Kylie, Avery, Mason, and Miss Melissa Tyler.
I asked Roger what he was going to do, and he said whatever the grandkids want him to do. Come on, come on up here, and we'll get a picture taken, okay?
Mike, I appreciate you announcing that I had my own signed person down at District One, too, so.
I knew that was coming, guys. All right, wait a minute, I think some staff wanted to get in here with us. Come on, guys. How'd you believe 42 years ago?
You put up with him that long, Rocker? Need to give him another plaque.
I think I threw my head because... No, that's okay. We'll look at you now, there. Roger, congratulations.
Absolutely. Thanks for your service.
Thank you, Roger, and your family for being here, and congratulations on your retirement. All right, thank you, sir. Roger really didn't want this to happen, but it happened, so that's just the way it is. Our next one is Employee of the Quarter recognition. Lori, if you'll come forward, and Mr. Siafi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Employee of the Quarter is recognized for their exemplary service and performance. And there's a committee that reviews all nominations each quarter and makes their selection for the Employee of the Quarter. And this quarter is Don Peckham from Planning and Development.
Yay!
With the Employee of the Quarter, the employee gets a certificate and $100 check from the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Board. In December, all Employee of the Quarters for 2021 are eligible to receive Employee of the Year. At that time, they're eligible to receive a $500 check from the Board of County Commissioners.
All right.
John has a few words to say, and then we'll present to...
Make it nice, John, make it nice.
Good morning, Commission. So, Putnam County would like to recognize Mr. Donald Peckham for his tireless work, dedication to the citizens, contractor, staff, and administration of Putnam County. Mr. Peckham is our full-time Plans Examiner, mainly residential, but he is also the Flood Plane Manager for the county. And his dedication to the CRS program, Floodin', the Flood Program, helps our citizens enjoy discounts and their flood insurance premiums. His work as a Plans Examiner doesn't get recognized enough with a over 75% homeowner builder rate of submittal. Takes up an enormous amount of his time. Even while performing all these duties for the county, Don is always going that extra mile to lend a helping hand to fellow staff, contractors, citizens, administration. So, with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Peckham. Usually, nobody sees Don because he's always in his office, but this is Donald Peckham, our Flood Plane Manager and Plans Examiner for Putnam County.
Thank you, everybody that had a part in the decision. I don't know how that decision was made, because we have a lot of great employees. But I do appreciate it, thank you.
Congratulations.
We gotta have two rows. Y'all slide up just a little bit.
Put the white ink on.
Can you get us a...
Good deal.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Now get the man some help. He wouldn't have to work tirelessly if he had help, Siafi. Mr. Siafi, did you hear me? He would not have to work tirelessly if he had help.
All right, our next presentation, this is Administration, the ratification of Putnam County Department of Health Director. And I do want to recognize Mr. Mark Landers is in the audience today. He's... I'm probably going to mess this up, but you're Deputy Administrator for the Department of Health, is that correct? Or area... Yeah, he's our go-to guy. Got something here, Ms. DuK, if you'll allow me just a moment. Got some reasons why we love our leader, Diana DuK. Yes. So, the pressure's on, but I'm going to read a couple of them, just because I think they're very important. "I missed Diana the first time she was brought around to the offices, so I later went to her office and introduced myself. It was like a breath of fresh air. Her demeanor was very inviting. She had a smile on her face with an open personality. Thank you, Diana, for taking the monumental task, and I look forward to your leadership and future upgrades." That was Ms. Terri Flag, who said that. And then, "I cannot express, I cannot begin to express the gratitude I have for Diana bringing me aboard as her partner in leadership for this department. Her vision for the community and staff are completely aligned with my own, and the sky is the limit for what I think we'll be able to achieve. This community and department are so deserving of leadership that is invested in the future, and she is a leader who can take us there. I am thankful and blessed, congratulations, Diana, so far so well earned, Stacy Branham." Okay? Now, if you will, bring your family up, Mr. Suggs, if you'll come. And I want to tell you why she's coming up, her and her family, and your staff. Bring your staff with you, if you'd like. The first time I met Diana, we were talking about COVID was coming down, winding down to a little bit of an end. And she introduced herself to me, and she said, "Why are we not scheduling the second shot when we're doing the first shot?" And I thought, wow, what a thinker outside the box here. Poor Commissioner Turner had to go through COVID. That'll be his claim to fame, that the commissioner has a chairman of the board, unfortunately. But other good works that he did, but, you know, every chairman has their moment. But this is an opportunity for us to ratify a wonderful human being, and I look forward to working with you. Mr. Suggs, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, absolutely. As a county administrator who sat next to Chairman Turner for that year at the EOC dealing with this, it is absolutely a breath of fresh air to see Ms. Diana DuK being ratified here this morning. You know, we had an outstanding director prior to, and I just look forward to the opportunity to work with you as well, continue building relationships between the Department of Health and Putnam County that we already have, and improving on some of the things that you've already talked about wanting to bring over. And so, we're excited, as anybody else. We're excited that Mr. Landers and your entire staff and your family are here today, because that's what we are here in Putnam County. We pride ourselves on being a rural, small community, but we're also very proud of the fact that we like to treat each other like family. So, welcome to our family, Diana.
Thank you.
And before you say anything, Mr. Landers, would you please come up? I'd like for you to say a few words, and bring your staff up, if you'd like. They're more than welcome to... We don't bite anybody, so I promise.
Chairman Harvey, commissioners, and Mr. Suggs, and Ms. Young. And I know we've got to be very close here over the last couple of months, working with this. And up here with me, I have Becky Keys, who is our statewide services administrator. And I also have Mr. Paul Myers, who is Diana's ex-boss. He was the interim deputy, or he was the deputy secretary ahead of me. And he's also the health officer for Latchwell County. So, my other job is I'm the health officer in Marion County. So, we have a nice little, nice little triangle here, covered with our three counties, and I'm super excited. I know when the position first became vacant, we reached out and we had some discussions. And from those discussions, you know, I was given a good idea of what Putnam County was looking for. You know, obviously, the best, you deserve the best. And through our conversations, I realized we needed somebody energetic, somebody innovative, very, very of an outgoing personality. So, I called Mr. Myers, and he knew I wasn't talking about him when I told him those traits. But he did offer up, he said, "I have somebody perfect for that job." And when he referenced Diana, I knew that was it. I've worked with Diana for quite a few years, and so, I was happy to bring her over and have her sit in as interim, and then work with each of you close. You know the energy she brings to the job. When I get a phone call from her, I sit down and listen, because you've got to pay attention, because she is going to be to the point. And just, it brings, it's just a level of, it's a refreshing level to work with. So, I'm honored to bring her up here in front of you all today for our confirmation vote, and just super excited to partner. And we will be partnering Marion, we'll be partnering quite a bit with Putnam on every chance we get, so. Thank you.
Diana, you have the floor now, if you'll introduce your family, and then say a few words.
Sure. So, I have Leilani, my little one, she's six, Giovanna, my oldest, she's 10, my husband Eddie, and my mom Maria, my dad Diego. And then, I have my lovely staff here to support me. I have Robin, Terri, and I have Stacy, my new director of nursing.
Good deal. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll move on.
Sure, I've been with the Department of Health for 14 years. My background is with the University of Florida. I got a bachelor's in health education behavior. I then got my master's in public health with the University of South Florida. I've worked in various departments within the Department of Health, had a lot of experience with the EOC, with COVID response, with shelter duty. I've worked with the Latchwell-Wick Program. We cover 10 county region in all north-central Florida. That's how I had the experience of working with Mr. Mark Lander. So, I've had lots of experience within the Department of Health and working in different areas. So, I'm very excited to be here, and I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Good deal. And I want to say, even at the EOC building the other day, you stayed the night there, you slept on the cot?
Yes, sir.
Even though we were ready, we didn't have to use it as much as we thought we did, and thank God for that. But you were ready. And the minute that we decided to open a special needs shelter, it was done really quick, and your leadership really proved that, so we thank you for that. Board, you've heard, and you've met, you've had an opportunity to interview, and the pleasure of the board is now to ratify. So, the chair will entertain a motion to do such a thing.
So, would I move that we ratify this position?
Proper ratification, proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Suggs, we're going to... Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Anywhere you want to go, say once. Would you like to go down? All right. I think we're kind of offset. Diana, take three baby steps to your left. Right, right.
No, that's me, right.
Your other left. I looked over to my right, and I went, "Who's the guy standing on the chair?" Diana, here's the remarks.
Agreed, and you'd have a bad day.
I thought Paul was standing on the chair. What is that all about? All right, we got through all of those, and that's the best part of our job, and we really... we really appreciate the audience's attention on that. Next item on our agenda is our public comment on agenda items. There is agendas back there in the back up against the wall, if you've had a chance to look at those, so if, if any public comment on agenda items, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we're going to go, we're going to close that public portion of our meeting, and we're going to go to the consent agenda. And Commissioner Adamsak, if you have anything that you'd like to pull?
E and J.
E and item J?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Uh, it's already been pulled.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
And I have none. So, the chair will entertain a motion on the remaining items?
Mr. Chairman, I can motion that we approve items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, and K.
A proper motion?
A second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Mr. Adamsak, item E, page 56 in your agenda?
Yeah, so, I guess I just have a few questions, or a few things for clarification. Happened to be at a meeting with, in Crescent City, and our Congresswoman had brought up this, this amount in the plan, and she had stated that if we accept this plan, that we could not lower taxes during that two years. I just want to make sure we're all aware of that, and if that stands true. And if we could research that, if that's the case, I, I'd like to have that answer before I vote on this, if possible.
Mr. Suggs, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, sir, that's, uh, that's the first I've heard of that one, but I do know that when we attended the Florida Association of Counties last week, you know, we were, we, we attended a meeting on this, and a lot of the legal folks that were part of the association has asked a numerous amount of questions, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of about 900, if I'm not mistaken, and, so we'll check and see if this is one of the questions that was asked, and if it is, we'll see if we can get a response to it.
And my second part to that would be, would that include, because Florida does it kind of unique, where we have trim notices, would meeting trim, let's say next year we decide to roll back to the trim, which in Florida isn't considered a tax drop, but would that be considered under the federal requirements of this, a tax reduction?
Again, we'll have to ask the legal folks to, to seek its other response to that.
Okay, thank you.
I have not heard that, but it was a good question to be asked.
And, and I guess, Bill, you were there, is that what you understood her to say as well?
I remember her mentioning that, I mean, she caught both, both of us off guard, you know, with.
Sir, she did.
You know, it's, it's almost like she said, "We've got this money," so the people in the room were going, "Well, what is Putnam County doing with its $14 million, and we haven't received it yet, as far as I understand, right?" And it looks at it, and reading your packet, it says 50%, and then 50% in a year, or something like that, and talking to Julianne just a little bit, it's really unclear, and then talking to Administrator Suggs, really unclear of how you can spend this money, and talking to Administrator Suggs this morning, didn't you say there were 900 questions coming from the Florida Association of Counties? What are the guidelines?
Yes, sir.
For this money?
There was a rather large amount of questions, that, that, that number for some reason stands up, but what they've done is, is they're taking questions from, from everyone, and forwarding those questions in, and getting individual responses back, and they'll, they'll continue to update us on those as those responses come in. It was an interesting forum that, that we sat through, because there is a lot of unanswered questions at this point, and so, you know, the acceptance of the money today is nothing more than us saying that we're, we're willing to take the money in, but that doesn't mean that we've got a spending plan put together yet, because until we get some answers to those unknowns, I believe it will be prudent not to, to put a, a plan together to utilize these funds until we understand what our responsibilities are.
Right. So. Mr. Pickens, are you done?
Yeah.
Mr. Turner?
Terry, Julianne, will it jeopardize us getting this money if we put it off a couple of weeks till the next meeting, table this till the next meeting? To just see, because this is the first I've heard about the, um, the deal about that you can't reduce taxes, and, and I'm not saying that if, if they give me $15 million, we probably could keep from reducing taxes next year, as long as that doesn't include rollback. Does that count? Because, I mean, in reality, we can talk all the political stuff we want to talk, but in reality, with being constrained as we are, the best we're going to be able to do is take the rollback, or some portion of that rollback amount, so, as far as actually dropping, dropping taxes is going to be very difficult, so I'd like, I think that it would be really great to have an explanation, if you don't, if y'all don't think it'll jeopardize us getting this, to table it till the next commission meeting. Do you think that would be a problem?
I don't think so.
We.
Your best guess?
At this time, there's so much ambiguity around the program, we cannot tell you that answer. It did, it was discussed at Florida Association of Counties, that if the municipal recipients do not accept their dollars, it will not go back into a pool, so at some point, although not, not identified at this time, there will be a deadline to accept it. Whether or not they cut that off without knowledge, or, you know, posting the, the notice that here's going to be your deadline, that I cannot tell you. Although, we could accept the funds and not spend any funds and return the funds, should the board decide that they do not want to spend the ARPA funding. The extent, again, Commissioner Adamsak's comments this morning is the first that I've heard something to that initiative. I understand the ARPA funding, it may not directly or indirectly offset a reduction in the net tax revenue for an entity, but would it translate to our, our hands being tied?
I know that I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot with any of these, and I realize I am good as this is, but if, if we accepted the money and isolated the funds, do you think that it would then make us have to do what they say, even if we gave the money back because we didn't agree to do it?
I don't believe if you accept the funds, isolate the funds, and then return the funds for, that you do not want to participate in the program, that you would still be obligated to follow the program guidelines. However, again, with all my disclaimers that have been said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Adamsak?
So, after that meeting of the prior Friday, this, I talked to some commissioners in other, other counties, and they're doing things like town halls and the like, to discuss with the community, separate from, specific to this funding, how they'd like to see it spent, with the abstract guidelines that are there, and obviously some things the community bring to us, we may not be able to do it, but it, it does achieve two purposes, allows us to understand what the community's goals are, as well as if we can facilitate some of those things with this money. So, I don't know if the, the commission is interested in doing that, but that may be something we want to get off the ground sooner than later, if it is something we decided we wanted to do. I support involving the community in how we decide to use this money, because ultimately it's all taxpayers' money, especially in this case.
It's got to be done within the program, infrastructure program guidelines.
Sure.
Mr. Rawls?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem accepting the money, if we can put it on hold, I think we, we do need to have a conversation, so, I reached out to Sam, and he sent me an email, and it might be beneficial, maybe if he forwards you guys a copy of that. It has all the, the websites that you can go on and research, the, the, the grant, the grant money, or whatever you want to call this, American Recovery Money. But my understanding is that this money is really intended for us to get it out into the community, to help landlords, people that were, that were deficient in their, their mortgages and rent payments, businesses that suffered, you know, a lot of this, I think, is really meant for the public and not really for our consumption, so I think we really should go after it, and I don't think it would hurt the, the public, and obviously for every dollar that we're able to put out will come back to us, in, as well in the form of tax dollars, but I don't, I don't really have a problem moving this forward, if we're just going to put it on hold for now until we get some definitive answers and have, you know, we may have to have two or three workshops to get through this. You know, it, there's more questions than answers here, but I, I don't think it's going to kill us to approve it today.
Mr. Turner?
I agree. I, I don't know what we can use it for yet, I think it's a big jump at this point to say it's all to be given back. I think at this point, the biggest thing to say is it's going to be used for some kind of infrastructure, whether it be human infrastructure, or in-the-ground infrastructure, or whatever, I think that's just way too early to be even thinking that that's what it's for. But I am in a full agreement, that I think we need to go ahead and take this money, and we need to isolate the money, and then we need to work as hard as we can to see what we can use the money for, and, and it may take some workshops, and then again, it may be absolutely cut and dried, and everybody can be, everybody can be educated at workshops, but as far as being told what to do, I think there's going to be big caveats that come with this money, and big restrictions that come with this money, so, I, I think we should go ahead and accept the half of the money, and put it, just isolate it with, and then if the rules get so, so heavy that we can't bear them anymore, then we'll just go ahead and give the money back, and hopefully we don't have to live by the rules any longer.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, and I, and to let you know, I have attended many, many webinars, classes, Sam and I have been involved in this, we've mentioned it from this seat quite a bit, about the 7.2 and the 7.2 different funds coming to the county. Truly, workshops are going to have to take place, truly, citizens' participation is going to have to take place, but also, let me assure you, and Commissioner Turner is right, the big emphasis was on the infrastructure getting back out in the community. So, I don't have a problem accepting this money, with the caveat, because there's always strings attached when you get money. If it's my money, I can spend the money, we learned that in the CARES Act. It took us quite a bit of, of work to spend that kind of money, and this would be no different. And people said, "Why did it take you so long?" Well, if I had $14 million, I could sit on the street corner today and be broke by tonight, but it's not my money.
I don't know that it'd even be that easy if I knew.
I bet they'd find out and line up pretty quick. So, yeah, so the chair will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Yes?
As part of that motion, I just want to pass along that some of my clients are also, based on the advice of their auditors, setting up completely separate bank accounts in order to put this money in, and if you're going to look at accepting this money, I would advise you to possibly also include in your motion the authority to Administration of Finance to set up that separate account.
Good point, Mr. Commando. If the chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with accepting the 7.2 million and 7.2 million for the next two years, set up a separate account, and authorize the finance department to do so, to expend and monitor the money separately from our other spendings.
Mr. Rawls? Okay, taken by Commissioner Adamsak? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
Commissioner Rawls, would you consider putting in your motion that we're going to accept the American Rescue Plan Act allocation, in case that turns out to be instead of 17, 7.2, 7.2 and 7.2 doesn't add up to 14, 474, 831?
Yeah, that's no problem.
What the amount is, and so, could we just change that to, instead of numbers, put on there the American Rescue Plan Act allocation funds?
Yeah, we'll call it ARPA allocation.
Mr. Adamsak, are you?
It's fine.
Second? Okay, so the proper motion is to accept the American Rescue Plan Act allocation of 14, 474, 831. Motion by Commissioner Rawls, second by Commissioner Adamsak?
Not what it was, it was that we're going to accept the American Rescue Plan Act allocation funds.
That's what I said.
It could be more or less, whatever they are, we're going to accept them.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Mr. Adamsak, you have item J on your agenda?
I think, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner?
Commissioner Rawls, was part of your motion for them to segregate them into a separate bank? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
So, I guess it would come as no news that I would pull this item, so I, I do appreciate, just so the public knows, Commissioner Turner's been working to, to try to get us to a point where we understand the, the future of the growth of our water and septic sewer projects, and I very much appreciate that effort that you're putting forward towards that. I, I have taken of the opinion, because this benefits such a small segment of our population, until and given time with Mr. Turner, that it, it shows that it has a break-even point, or the point where it actually takes in some funds. I just can't be moved to vote yes on these, so I basically had to pull it to make a no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak, Mr. Turner?
I appreciate your position, Commissioner, but part of, the only way that we're going to make the, the water sewer system in East Black is self-sustaining, the only way, is to grow our way out of it. The only way that we're going to grow our way out of it, and it costs more and more and more money, is to get grants. This is a grant that we asked water management to give us, water management granted us, it's a no cost to the county unless we overrun, and the only way that we would overrun is if we hooked up more septic tanks to the existing sewer system, then they ought, then we have funds to hook up, that's the only way. So, basically, we hook up, we hook up existing septic tanks to our sewer system that's already in place using their money, and then we get to collect the funds from the, from the deal. So, well, I understand your, your position that even water management dollars are taxpayer dollars, I get it. If we don't get it, somebody else is going to get it. So, the only way we're going to make this, this sewer and water system work is to grow our way into sustainability, that's it. Now, all the other things I am still working on, and Ms. Franks has been very diligent in doing a bunch of research, and Ms. Young has worked very, very hard on this the last month, along with me, to try to come up with different suggestions, not really recommendations or, but maybe suggestions for the board to consider, but, but that's no reason not to take a grant that's been given to us, that's going to get septic tank and fluid out of the river, that's also going to, to help us expand our system at no cost to us, the county, and so, I, I think we should accept this. I mean, if we want to ever see sustainability, the last thing we want to do is turn down somebody else's help at just gaining that sustainability. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Rawls?
Yeah, I, I agree with both Commissioner Adamsak and Commissioner Turner on different points. My, my heartburn, I'm going to vote for this, but my heartburn, and I'll just state it again, is that we're installing utilities on people's property, and we're responsible for the maintenance of that on private property, and we don't do that with any other part of our government, and I respond to emails all the time and tell people, "Well, we're not allowed to work on private property," but when it comes to this, we're going to spend taxpayer dollars to make an improvement on their property, and then we're going to maintain it in perpetuity, and those chickens will come to roost one of these days. We will be paying to replace every single one of those pumps out there, if not the entire pump station, and it's going to cost in the future, and I just, I think, as we go forward this, we should cut that part of it out, and tell people, "This is your system, we're going to give it to you, this is our gift to you, being funded by the St. John's River Water Management, and you're responsible for the maintenance from this day forward."
Mr. Rawls, Mr. Pickens?
I agree, I agree with that statement, and I agree with Paul's concerns, there's no question, but I also agree with Commissioner Turner's, that we're in this, and, and we've got to try to work our way out of it, to move forward, so I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this grant, because I, I don't see any other way, and Commissioner Turner is, with, with Ms. Franks and Ms., Ms. Young, has, is working diligently to try to get some numbers together, to, to see where we can get to a point where this thing could be sustaining itself, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Adamsak? Okay, the board, the chair will entertain a motion on item J.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we move item J forward.
Thank you, proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you very much. Next item would be our 905 codes enforcement. And, Mr. Siafi, do you have that? Sent the big guy over for this.
Yeah, where's Thomas at?
Yeah, Mr. Moore was, you know, still recovering from the last time he was in front of you guys. He sent me to bring it in.
Hey, you want to drop the mic, or knock away, or? Can't believe you just went there, really?
With all due respect, sir.
Yeah, I get that, I get.
So, our first case is case number 2004-00187, Lamar and Cynthia Harmon, property address is 700 Shirley Street. The case is now compliant, the total amount of fine, of the fine accrued is $11,118.50. Staff has calculated the actual hard cost of enforcement to be $3,241, as shown on the fine reduction worksheet, and if the board recommends, the staff ask for the hard cost of $32.41 to be paid within 90 days for code case 2004-00187.
Okay, are the Harmones here today? Would you like to come speak to us? Would you like to come speak to us?
Good morning, Mr. Harmon. I worked in Putnam County for a number of years, and I started trying to facilitate a home in this area. I did get a mobile home out there, but it, it got burnt, and I had to obviously demolish it. I did, when I got the notice, I went ahead and cleaned it up, which was back in 2005. All of the metal I took to a recycle thing, and then the other wood part I went ahead and took to a landfill. So, I did get it cleaned up, but I didn't, didn't realize at the time that I had to get a demolition permit, but I went ahead and called it in after I got it cleaned up and everything. And I didn't hear anything else from it, and my son decided he wanted to put a mobile home out there, and I said, "You know, fine." And that's when I found out about the additional cost there. But I wanted to make a note that I did clean it up in 2005.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Harmon?
It just sounds like one of those situations that was almost, you know, unforeseeable for them, but unfortunate for everybody involved.
Yes.
And the, the permit was pulled and cleared?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there's a new, new residence on the property?
Well, he's trying to put it, get a mobile home put out there. I went ahead and got a septic tank and everything, you know, driveway and so forth, and the mobile home I had, there, someone burned it. It caught fire. I don't know if it was lightning or whatever. But anyway, at that point, I had to, you know, obviously clear it out. So, I got a notice back in 2005 to clear it out, and I did, like I said, I took all the metal to a recycle place, and then I demolished all of the wood and just took it to a landfill.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reduce the fine by the additional 2,160, being consistent with what we've done in the past, leaving a total of $1,081 and giving 90 days to pay.
The motion is for...
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls made a motion of a $1,081 fine. It paid within 90 days. Commissioner Turner has seconded it. Commissioners, any further discussion on the matter? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. So, you'll get with Mr. Siafi. The fine is $1,081 if paid within 90 days.
Is, is there anyone, any way I can get an extension on that payment? Because right now, I'm kind of in a hardship, if I could, you know?
How much time you need?
Yeah.
Six months would be enough?
Six months would be a little bit better for me.
So, moved.
Mr. Rawls has amended his motion for $1,081.
Motion's passed. I think we might have a new motion.
We'll make a motion that we allow him six months to pay that $1,081.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a new motion on the floor to allow Mr. Harmon on case number 2004-00187 to pay within six months, $1,081. Mr. Turner seconded it. Any further discussion of board members? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes as well. Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Can you give me that amount again, so that I can write?
$1,081. What we did was, we took out, there was $1,320, I'm sorry, $2,160 administrative fee that we, we waived. The rest, the costs are our costs in it, and we wouldn't waive those. So, we're just getting back what we put in.
Well, I appreciate that, you know, that's, that was a big help for me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your consideration.
Wonderful day.
Thank you, man.
Okay, next case, Mr. Siafi, is case number 2010-00891.
Yes, sir, for Mad Assets LLC, 143 Highliner Road. Case 2010-00891 is now compliant. The total amount of the fine accrued is 25,596.15. Staff has calculated the actual hard cost of enforcement to be $4,860, as shown on the fine reduction worksheet. If approved, staff recommends the fine to be paid within 90 days.
Is any, anybody here for Mad Assets? They say none. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue what we've been doing, reduce the fine by an additional $1,320, which would leave 3,540. Give them 90 days to pay.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rawls to pay $3,540 with 90 days payment plan. Mr. Pickens has seconded it. We have a discussion topic, Mr. Adamsak?
So, I guess this question is for the attorney. I mean, in this case, it looks like it's a company, right? It's an investment firm. I mean, they really should know to take the due diligence to, to look into a property before they buy it. Do we have any leeway to, to treat an investment firm different than an individual owning a home who plans to live in it or plans to use it to recreate, whereas this is actually a company that's, really should've done their work when they purchased the property to know and when they made their decision? I mean, that's what they do. Do we have any leeway to act differently with reference to that, given they should be taking some steps?
And to the Commissioner, through the chair, you have the leeway to review every application individually based on the circumstances that come before you. So, there's nothing that says you have to have a blanket rule. You've taken a particular approach as it pertains to residents of Putnam County. However you feel appropriate, you can reduce or not reduce, you could keep the entire fine intact. Now, that may affect what the Commission's stated goals are about turning into income-producing properties and trying to get people to invest in the county, but that's a decision you'll have to make.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Turner, you have the floor?
Now, that was basically what I wanted to say with what he ended up with. It's never been about making money on this program. It's trying to take properties that the county would normally, would be properties that would come back to the county, or we'd have foreclosed on and getting them in compliance and getting them back on the tax rolls and getting them back productive again and getting the eyesore buildings and all torn off of them. That's what this program is all about. It's not about making money or what have you on fines or what have you. And quite frankly, I don't care if a company cleans them up or an individual cleans them up. I, just as long as they get cleaned up and get back into being productive pieces of property that aren't trashy and, and, and need abatement done to them, so, well, I see your point you were going for. I don't think we should treat, I think we should praise our lucky stars that we have people continually cleaning up and doing exactly what this program was designed to do.
So, I guess, so I guess the question I would have is, if we, if we saw a trend where the same people were doing this repetitively, would we wanna maybe do something about it? No, I, I agree with what you're saying, 'cause I do want, I mean, one of the things I ran on when I was running for this office was cleaning up abate, abating properties. I mean, so, it is one of my stated goals. It is something that I'm very adamant about. I also just didn't wanna see organizations maybe taking advantage of our good graces if, as we get further along in the future of the county, and maybe we have a lot less of these properties, which is our goal.
It's still a little bit of a, of a gamble for somebody to come in with a property that has a $25,000 fine on it. They purchased the property, they, they have the fine on it, they spend the money to go in on abatement costs if there's any left that haven't already been done, and then they got to go ask if they get the, if they can get the fine reduced when the property, in most cases, is not worth the money that they end up having in it, period, much less the abatement. So, might be making a little bit, but there's a pretty good risk there. So, you know, the last thing I wanna do is discourage any of these individuals, whether they be a company or an LLC or a, or a personal individual, from helping us clean up the county, and that's what I, what I think this program's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Rawls?
I, I agree with Commissioner Turner that whether it's, it's in-county money or out-of-county money, that at the end of the day, the goal is to clean up the, the real estate, clean up the blight and, and the areas that we have this in, and I think that we, we should not discriminate against anybody's wanting to let them come in and spend it. They're fixing to spend an extra $3,000-plus on fines. But I, I think Commissioner Turner hit the nail on the head. This, this could discourage, and I, I personally don't feel comfortable treating in, investors differently. Dealing with investors, especially over the past few years, like I have been, it's, it's been a struggle to get people to come into Putnam County and, and spend investment money where we need it. So, I think this is just something that we can do to show that we're, you know, fair and equitable to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak, and then we'll call for the vote.
Yeah, so I'd like to thank the other members of this board for entertaining that dialogue, so I appreciate the feedback. Is there a means by which we could, since we're gonna continually remove this administrative monthly fee, there's...
Yeah, I've already asked.
There's no means even via changing ordinance or anything to...
Change your ordinance.
And where would that need to be changed? I mean, 'cause if we're never gonna collect that and we don't intend to, which it sounds like the intent is not to, why go through this mathematic equation?
Commissioner, I, I would like to suggest that before you start removing any fees we have, we might have some cases that do take a lot of work, legwork.
Okay.
Administrative oversight, so if we blanketly get rid of that option that the county has to recover our costs for me, Son and Tom, Beth, somebody to just monitor this situation, I think we're gonna shoot ourselves in the foot. So, it actually makes it look great for you guys that you're wiping out a fee for somebody.
Sure.
Gives you a little bit of leeway, but there's gonna be some cases where that might not be an option. We might have a lot of boots on the ground, and we need to recoup our costs.
Okay, and you'll document that, obviously.
We would, absolutely.
Okay, I just haven't heard one where that was documented yet.
Hasn't happened yet, but I, I mean, the amount of cases we have in the county, I'm sure there's a few sitting out there.
And I appreciate that feedback as well. Thank you. That's all I have.
By, for the record, that was the same thing I was told and asked the same question.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the truth.
Maybe I wasn't listening, or maybe I wasn't hearing it.
So, we have proper, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next case, Mr. Siafi?
Yes, sir. Case 2014-00798, 602 Chappelle Avenue. The original fine is $47,020. The case is now compliant. The staff has calculated the actual hard cost of $2,478. If the board approves, we recommend payment within 90 days.
I don't have a worksheet on it.
I'm gonna say, I, thank you, 'cause I got confused. I don't have that one.
You don't have that one?
The worksheet on it.
How much was the administrative cost of the 2478?
You don't have the worksheet, gentlemen?
No, not on page, not on that page, if we don't.
I'm gonna pass this around to you.
This is a, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
We got 790.
The administrative was 790?
That's what it says on the sheet. So, this is another one of those cases, it looks to me like, where we had two code cases on the same piece of property. We got, I'm assuming that one had stopped and then the other one started, or one had continually rolled on while, but had already gone to special magistrate.
I would have to...
This is one of those that I got so upset about, I think, last month. I don't...
Yeah, right.
That there was two code cases on the same piece of property. So, how many people, how many times do we need to crawl up on somebody's back, so?
Well, so, it's all relative, right? So, if we have a case that's already gone through due process, we can't add charges. We have to start a new case. So, one case might be for unsafe structure, the other one might be derelict vehicles. If they didn't, if they didn't have derelict vehicles at the time we started the unsafe structure, that's a totally separate case. I can't add charges on, something's already been processed. So, that's how we end up with multiple cases sometimes.
So, basically, if we wanted to change the way we do things now, instead of having a case that doesn't go anywhere, and then we put a big fine on a piece of property that never gets paid, and we, we don't foreclose on them, and so, it just sits there, and then a year or two later after that is done, then another case comes up on the same property that we, that we go after again. The, it's just, it could go on and on and on if somebody finally didn't buy it and clean it up, correct?
Well, it could, but there's also a, a part in 162 about repeat violators, that the county hasn't even got into those, that realm of 162 of enforcement.
But we'd still have to foreclose, wouldn't we, in order? That's our, basically, our only remedy is to foreclose.
Right, we have options. So, we have legal, tell us what's better, to abate it, to foreclose it. So, we're getting legal counsel on how to proceed, and I think the, the board right now has a process that is working. It's in place, it's working. You know, I don't know how much you wanna tweak that right now. We, we've had the most revenue coming in, the most cleaned up properties ever, right now. So, the last three years, we've been, it's been proceeding along very well. So, if you wanna change the process, we can do that.
That's what the program was designed for. I'm just...
Yeah. I know, I understand what you're saying.
Every good program doesn't mean it's got to stay like that forever, because basically, there's a lot of properties out there that would never enter into this program because of this situation where they have multiples on it or whatever the case...
Right.
...may be. So, that was, I guess my question was, was do we, do we think about a way to try to bring some of those in that have multiple, multiple code enforcement on them, or to try to, to entice people to bring those back into this program to get them cleaned up faster, instead of just having another code complaint, another code's complaint, because obviously, those are the ones that we need to figure out a way to get them in the program? Or we need to go on and foreclose on them and get them cleaned up, one or the other?
And it'll stop the fines you're worried about, and stop them at that point? So, that is an option for us, but some of the properties, the value of the property doesn't, it's not feasible for the county to go through the whole foreclosure process. So, that's why we end up with some of these cases that drag on forever. Somebody finally buys them, as you see through these cases, and they wanna clean them up, so they come to the board. If they had multiple cases, you guys are the ultimate authority. You can say, "We're gonna wipe this, this other case altogether." I mean, that's your option. So, it, it's in your hands to say, "I, I think this is ridiculous," or, or "It's a good program," or, you know, for each case individually.
Well, I, I really do think when we have, when we have a, multiple properties, and we've set this precedence, when we have multiple cases on the same property, I think we've set the precedence already in the past that we could look at it as possibly one deal, possibly fine them for one of them, do away with the other one. I think that's what we did last month, or, or do something a little bit different than having two cases on the same property, one now that it's finally cleaned up. I think we just need to take, take the, the most recent case and, and make the first case like we did last month. We made the first case zero, and we've settled a second case for the, for the recommended amount. And I think that's a precedence that's fair, and I think it's a precedence that'll get even more people maybe to start cleaning these things up if we set that precedence. And ultimately, that's what we're trying to do, is clean these properties up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner, Mr. Rawls?
I, I agree with Commissioner Turner. This is not a punitive action. It's, this is the carrot.
Oh, of course.
You know, we don't wanna use the stick, obviously, so I, I would have absolutely no problem at all if you could put those together, you know, highlight the fact that there's two, zero one of them out. I don't, you know, take the lowest one and zero it out, or, you know?
Yeah, I'll leave that for the board to do.
Yeah, I'm gonna say the board.
I'm not gonna wait.
I'm saying, point, point that out to us, and then we could, we can make that decision. At, at the end of the day, I know what you want is a county that you don't have to respond to complaints about, like that one that we had to deal with the other day, you know, subject system. It just, you, that, that really shouldn't burden our staff. We have a lot of other work that needs to be done, and this is a way to move forward in a more expedient manner.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Adams, that?
Are, are these the same parcel? I think these are two different parcels.
I don't have the case in front of me.
One's Chappelle Ave. and one's Hayes Drive, I think.
Are they two separate?
I believe they are, yeah.
No, we have two, we, maybe that's stapled together. We have two cases for the same person.
Same person, different property.
Correct, different properties.
Okay.
Different properties.
Well, it makes a difference if it's not the same property.
Right, these, one's Hayes, and the other one is Chappelle.
Right.
But they have the same case number.
No, they're different.
No, they're not.
It's seven ninety-eight.
And two ninety-four.
And two ninety-four.
They're different.
Okay, all right.
I think we got confused, because you were missing the worksheet.
Mr. Lewis in the audience would like to speak? Mr. Lewis here today? Okay, seeing Mr. Lewis.
Let me take a shot at this.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure, Mr. Turner?
Okay, with regards to case number 2014-0798, I say that we reduce the fine to one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and give them ninety days to pay.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Sixteen eighty-eight, it paid within ninety days. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes, sign the ayes, have it. Next case?
I think I can take a shot at this one, if you'll go ahead and just ask, does anybody wants to speak to him?
Okay, Mr. Hayes, you in the, no, Mr. Lewis, you in the audience? No? All right, we'll move forward. Mr. Turner?
Okay, I think this is, because these were two separate pieces of properties, I say that we take one thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and settle this case, it paid within ninety days.
Okay, one second. A proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls, for, what was that number again? One, four?
Thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Seventy-two dollars, it paid within ninety days. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes, sign the ayes, have it. We're going to take a three-minute break. We're going to reconvene the Board of County Commission meeting. We do have a nine-thirty certain, and this is Public Works. Mr. Troxell, are you going to take this, adoption of a resolution to vacate a portion of First Street in Melrose? We, we first heard this on our workshop? So, this is going to be a public hearing. Before you go, Mr. Commando, do we need to have two of these meetings for this one?
So, we advertise it ahead of time, according to statute. You pass this resolution, and then there's a follow-up, presuming the commission approves the resolution. There's a follow-up advertisement that you have to run.
So, we have another one coming up to vacate?
There's just, no, no, this is it, but you, there's a follow-up notice, advertisement that follows this one.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Five oh five, that's my question.
Mr. Troxell?
That was a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Say it does not have to be done at five oh five, because it's the last one. There's certain orders that have to be done at five oh five in the evening.
Those are land use changes and taxes, so I don't believe this applies to that.
This will just go on the regular agenda as a second reading type.
Very cool. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Troxell?
I'm not sure, do I have to read this by resolution?
Please do.
This is a Putnam County Resolution Number 2021-052. A resolution vacating a portion of a road in the McGregor subdivision, known as First Street in Melrose, Florida, in accordance with Section 336.09 Florida statutes, closing and abandonment, abandonment of roads, authority in Section 336.12 Florida statutes, closing and abandonment of roads, termination of easement and conveyance of fee.
That's the one we already discussed.
Pretty much.
And then this, yeah, this was a Public Works recommends the, the closure of, of vacation of this street.
Good deal. Okay, this is a public hearing. So, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Please come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, I'm Thomas King. I own the property there, and I, I live in Keystone Heights, but the property address is 111 Magnolia Court in Melrose. I'm in favor of this, because this road actually is under the house.
I don't mean to laugh. I've seen that before. It was under our church one time.
It...
So, yeah.
Are you sure you want this done? And, and you, you, you think about, you know, it was platted in nineteen sixty-five, and, I mean, twenty-six, and the house is built in sixty-five, and as you may know, from my experience, houses in those days didn't really have a whole lot of code enforcement. And this, this property is actually two pieces separated by this alleged road that is, in fact, under the house. So, it doesn't make any sense to have the road there at all, in my, in my opinion.
I understand, sir. Thank you. Is there anybody else would like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody like to speak in opposition of this application? Hearing that, we close the public portion of our meeting. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner to adopt the resolution. Proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're going to skip our executive session. It's for a time certain of ten forty-five. Do we have to skip it, or can we go now since it's executive session?
Handle other issues, I need to.
And just wait till ten forty-five?
Okay. Mr. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds, you have the floor, sir? Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to apologize for missing the, the board's workshop that you guys had a couple of weeks ago, where you discussed options for fire MSTU, MSBU, special assessment. I have since listened to that discussion, and there was a lot of good information that was presented at that meeting. But also, I want to bring up the discussion that transpired after that regarding the percentage breakdowns of how the constitutionals are funded. The board gave staff direction on budgeting ad valorem revenues at ninety-six percent, and using a percentage breakdown for the constitutionals, just based on ad valorem revenues. When I first heard about the way this allocation was proposed, I thought it was, I think it's a, a good idea, but it has obviously pros and, and cons to it. One thing I would request that the board consider doing is not just looking at ad valorem taxes. I would suggest that the board look at using the ad valorem taxes, as well as the other revenues that are in the general fund. Things like the half-cent sales tax, communication service tax, the fiscally, the aid for fiscally constrained counties. There's thirteen to fourteen million dollars' worth of other revenues in the general fund that are going to float up and down, just like ad valorem revenues as well. So, I would just request that the board consider those as well. And I just looked on the, the state's revenue estimate website. Just sales tax and county revenue sharing, looks like it's going to be almost one point five million dollars more next year, next year's budget versus this year. So, that's a substantial amount of money that could be factored into that when the board weighs the decision on what to do with rollback rate, going to rollback rate, and those sort of things. So, I'll just request, apologize. The request that the board consider including some of those other revenues. Not, not user fees, like the building and zoning permits, and parks and recreation fees. Just those state-based fees, like half-cent sales tax and county revenue sharing, so...
Thank you, Mr. ...
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Can I get you to send me a, a list of that, and a breakdown of maybe like the last two years, and what you're projecting?
Sure, yeah. It's, it's all on the, yeah, there's a, there's a link. It's on the Florida website for Economic and Demographic Research, EDR.
I mean, what you, what you just discussed.
Okay.
Send me a list of the revenue there.
The revenues, yeah. There's only, yeah, there's just several of them, but yeah.
You could do that, and then give me current, and then one or two years back. I'd just like to see that. That's an interesting point.
And we talked about that on July third, and you were going to go to conference and then get back with us on that.
Yep.
We appreciate that very much.
I think, I think that it absolutely needs to be, if we're going to use them, which fees are included in that. The last thing I want to do is go through the whole argument again of whether we ought to do this or not. We've already voted to do this. It's a matter of, do we include these additional fees in our mathematical confrontation, or in our mathematical equation?
Right. And, and that's all I, that's all I was asking. I wasn't speaking to using the percentage breakdowns. I was just asking the board to consider including those other revenues in it, along with ad valorem, because the board may choose to do, go to a rollback rate, which obviously impacts ad valorem, but you have other revenues that may be going up. And if everybody's not based, because the board is, is part of the percentage that you voted on, I think all of those revenues that fluctuate should be included in that, and, and maybe a little more steady way to, to do it.
As long as those aren't earmarked for something else.
Correct.
Like the Better Place Plan, that one percent.
That's in a completely separate fund.
Already earmarked.
Correct, yes.
The gas taxes, that's already earmarked.
Transportation fund.
We use that to redo roads with, so...
Yep.
It would have to be funds that are not earmarked, or, or historically used for a, for a certain purpose.
Just those other state revenues that come into the general fund, that aren't, they don't have restrictions on, on how they're used. They're just used for general government operating, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Absolutely, thank you.
As I was against this idea to begin with, I would be against this for opposite reasons. The reason why we did this, the reason why I was positioned to do it, was to simplify things, and to make things more cookie cutter, I guess, is the way I would describe what I heard, which I'm completely against. I think it takes the commission's fiduciary responsibility and puts it on others. I think it's absurd, but that's not the point I'm making now. The point I'm making now is that further confuses the situation by adding all these other entries, and then the percentages would all have to change, and, so you'd have to, the percentages would change. I guarantee it would.
If you're looking at it just expenditures, it wouldn't be...
If you took it, and you said there's an extra thirteen million dollars, we're not just going to base, your, your needs didn't even add up to that. So, what was asked for wouldn't even be that. So, we would, it would make no sense to do that.
It would be the percentage of the thirteen million.
Right, so if you took the same percentages, which is what the motion included, I believe, and applied that to all these other tax revenues, you'd be...
It would just be the increase on those, and that's what I was saying, just two of them is another one point four million, but that's, that's correct. But other statements were made in that discussion about, these percentages would be after determining what the millage rate would be. And if the commission decides to go to the rollback rate, and so there's no increase on ad valorem, but you've got at least one point five million on other revenues, then the constitutionals get nothing.
So, I guess...
One point five, because we never know what the additional's going to be.
But that's how I, I always budgeted those revenues, and it's using the same formulas what I did this year, so...
Back when you were here, we cared.
Yeah.
Sorry, man, I have a smart aleck at the end.
I know. I expect it.
Okay, Mr. Adams, are you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done, but I, I'm against what we did, and I'm against adding this to it.
Mr. Rawls, you have the floor, sir?
I'm against what we did. I voted against it. I would be in favor of including the additional revenues that you're talking about. I'd like to see a list of them, obviously, but I do think that if we're going to take the easy way out and not give any thought to what we're actually doing, that we should at least include as much money as possible, because right now, we're short selling the constitutionals on their budget requests. So, we're not going to give any thought to it. We should at least have, have the extra revenue available to you guys, and maybe you can make yourselves whole.
Well, I'm going to take the floor for just a moment. I, I take exception to the fact that we're taking the easy way out.
Ain't the hard way, that's for damn sure.
No, it's not either. It was something that I believe that the board decided, we're all aboard.
Tried and true in other counties.
I got the floor right now, Mr. Rawls. I gave, I gave you the opportunity to speak, and I'd ask that you listen to your chairman, too. The fact is that the goal that I felt like was an actual number that the constitutionals could look towards every year, and as the county grew, their budget would grow. Now, Mr. Clerk, you brought up a good point, and you and I've had this conversation a little bit on the side of the road, and we were literally on the side of the road. I'm not, I'm not so sure I'm in favor of all those being added back in, because I want a consistent number that people can look at every year. But that doesn't take the ability for the board not to compromise, not to negotiate. We were very clear to the fact that if there's an anomaly, if there's something happening, you come to us, and you have that communication. So, I don't feel like we just took our, our fiduciary responsibility off the table. I think frankly, we, we set some guidelines that, like you said from the beginning of your conversation today, you felt like it was a good program. You felt like it was a good idea. It just needs to be tweaked a little bit. We knew that tweaking was going to take place in that meeting, and you heard us talk about that tweaking. So, I, I don't think that we've done that. I think we've done a good thing about moving this county forward, and everybody getting pressure off of them when it comes to budget time, and having some knowledge that next year, if we grow, everybody grows. If we don't grow, we're where we're at. And that's just, and then, no more, we're broke by the time the constitutionals come in, because that's historically seven years of what's happened when I've been sitting in this seat. And our employees go, when is it going to be our turn? And that's what we've had to deal with. So, I appreciate that. Mr. Adams, are you have the floor, sir?
Chairman, I'm going to respectfully disagree with your statement, because something else happened right after we did that. We basically canceled all of our budgetary meetings, including the one the next day. And some of us were prepared to talk about budgetary things, and we weren't even given the opportunity to discuss whether or not we should cancel the meeting for the next day, or future budgetary meetings. So, to me, we threw our hands up in the air from a fiduciary standpoint, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Pickett?
I, I did vote for it, and I think we had to do something, because it's been, you know, this is my fifth budget, and we battled the same things. So, I think this will kind of give us a, a benchmark, or whatever, that you expect to get this percentage. I, I do agree with Commissioner Rawls, and Mr. Turner, I believe he agreed, is to look at some of those funds that could come in and may be able to be distributed. Because we want to fund everybody as much as we can, but we also continue, the, the Board of County Commission and, and our departments, they have needs also. So, I, I think it can be tweaked, and I think we can move forward. We had to give staff a direction of, of where to go, so they needed some direction, unless I'm mistaken, and so we did. And I, I know it was a three to two vote, but we'll see how this works out, and, you know, next year's another year. And it's not set in stone where we can't change it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Mr. Adams, that?
Yeah, again, I respectfully disagree with, with you, Commissioner Pickens. I think it's, we, we should be talking about the things that go into the budget. We should be doing that in open forum. We should be doing that in budgetary meetings as a commission. That's what the people put us here for. That's what the people elected me for. That's what I ran on. I, I absolutely was running on the idea of being a budgetary hawk, and being an overseer of the budget. And, you know, like, like Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. I, I don't feel like we get enough information to even verify what we're trusting staff to do. And by staff, I mean our, our most highest level staff, not the people that are doing the groundwork day to day. So, I, I completely disagree with what I've heard from the chair, as well as yourself, in this regard. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Well, let me see if I can add something to what my esteemed colleague disagrees with. You know, it went three to two. Y'all go ahead and whine and cry and play your violin a little bit more. I don't even care. Thank you, Matt, for bringing it up, but it was a good valid point. But it, it uses the opportunity to twist around what we were trying to do, to make it look like we're trying to do something we weren't trying to do. So, look, you go ahead and keep it up, that's fine. Nobody, there ain't nobody, a bigger hawk on the budget than some of the other members sitting up here with you. So, but you haven't learned yet, it seems to me like, that you have, that this is not a campaign time. It's a time for leadership. I was hoping that some point, you can switch over from the campaigning to leading, and leading is leading...
Here we go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay, all right.
Well, you don't have a floor either, hotshot.
I know.
Okay.
I get crapped on for doing stuff like that, but you don't.
And our conversation, we have a ten forty-five meeting that we need to go to. Mr. Adams, I'll give you the last word, sir. You had your light on.
So, my understanding, you said... So, so my understanding, you said the word "we" and by "we," we didn't have this on our agenda. We weren't aware it was going to be voted on. We weren't aware it was coming down the pipe. It seemed in that meeting like some of us didn't know that it was coming. Like some of them, us had that conversation somewhere at some point, whether it was from staff to those people. It was very prepared. The conversation was very simple and quick. I was very disappointed and you're forcing me to say these things because I do represent the people and I have that fiduciary responsibility and the responsibility to the voters who voted me in and the responsibility of the voters who didn't vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak. And now we're going to go, we're going to go to executive session, so we're going to go to the other room. We're going to.
This is where we get spanked.
We're going to limit this meeting, I mean, we're going to recess this meeting. We'll be back in a few minutes. This is one time that the board can actually go talk to our attorney and do this in executive session. So we'll be back as soon as possible.
Fourteenth Florida County Commission meeting. Next item on our agenda, is there any appointments? Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Adamsak?
I have two.
Okay.
They're not on here, but we did verify through staff that they were, they expired, so I'd like to appoint, reappoint Mike Barrick into the Green Belt.
Okay.
And Kyle Heinz to the Fair Board.
Mr. Turner?
I have no other appointments.
And I have one, I always try to give people second terms, so Andrea Conover will be reappointed to the Fair Board. And I have no other appointments after that. Mr. Suggs, you're next on the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a few comments here this morning. First one is, as you all know, we dodged a bullet last week. You know, we had Hurricane Elsa out there churning up, bearing down on us for a little while, so we, we did everything proper. We did the, the local state of emergency. We activated the EOC, and I want to take the opportunity to thank staff for what they've done during that process. I think it was, if nothing else, was a great training opportunity for all of us. As you know, we've got a couple of new folks in place. Mr. Turnham Seed and Ms. Ms. Choate is the folks that work at the Emergency Operations Center under the direction of Public Safety Director Grimes. And they've done a fantastic job, and I want to make sure that we recognize those folks and all the staff that was prepared to do their functions as we were dealing with the unknown. So, thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, it was actually, it was a, an honor and a pleasure to sit there for two days with you as well. You did a great job, and staff has recognized that as well, and I want to make sure that you hear that today. They appreciated your leadership while we were there. On a different note, Public Safety Director Grimes and myself and a couple of others were riding around that morning of the storm, and we got an unfortunate text message about a tornado in the Satsuma area, the Office 17. So, we went to, went to explore and check and make sure our folks were safe. And, and your county administrator made a grave mistake that morning, and I posted something on my Facebook page that went out asking people to be safe. And turns out that that was a unfortunate spoof from, from a storm previous, and we had some citizens comment on it. One in particular, Ms. Gill, and if Ms. Gill is watching today or listening today, I want to say thank you to her for pointing that out and let her know that her county administrator takes full responsibility for that, that we certainly didn't want to disseminate bad information, but know that we're always looking to make sure that our, our public is safe. And, and for that unfortunate situation, I will apologize to not only Ms. Gill, but to, to my citizens as well. And so, we'll leave that at that. But it was, I think it's important Ms. Gill understands. I appreciate her letting me know that. And, and also, let's don't forget about Ms. Sarah this morning. You know, Ms. Sarah who does our agendas, who does our executive stuff, and does a lot of work for us here, is not feeling well. We miss her. We'd like for her to get healthy and get back. And recognize those folks that actually helped us here today with the agenda. We've got a great team here, and that's what it takes from time to time as a team. And a lot of our folks that don't normally deal with the agenda jumped in there this week to get the agenda out, and we want to make sure we thank them as well. So, and Mr. Chairman, one last thing. You know, there's a lot of conversation goes on from time to time at Adias, and sometimes it's a, it's conversation that we probably ought to have, shouldn't have, maybe need to have. But, but there was something said here this morning that I take great offense of. Basically, your county administrator was, it was alluded to that there's conversations that I have with board members, not other board members. And that is just not true. My door is always open. My phone always rings. We invite staff, we invite commissioners to come have conversations with us. But I'm not going to be able to sit here, you know, in a meeting like this and not point out the fact that someone accused me of not being ethical today. And I'm not going to sit here and tolerate that. I don't think it's a professional comment. I just think it's one of those things that, you know, if you don't feel like you're getting enough communication, so I suggest you come visit more often. I've never shut my door to any commissioner, never not answered my phone, never not returned a call to a commissioner. But to sit here and listen to that conversation, you know, it really bothers me because I'm, I try to be as professional as I can and communicate with everybody, not just the citizens and the staff, but the commissioners. And I just take great offense to that. That's all I'm going to say about that, but I just don't think it's appropriate. And I need to let my commissioners know I felt it was inappropriate this morning. I believe it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Commando?
Nothing to report, only that I think I've mentioned to a couple of you in times passing that the last week of July, I'm going to be out of the office, so I won't miss our next meeting, but I'm still available by phone. Also, if there are different agenda items you want to talk to me about sometime, I'm happy to kind of work through some of those things with you.
Thank you, Mr. Commando. And next, Commissioner comments, Mr. Rawls. I'll start from afar left.
Well, I think for the most part, we had a pretty uneventful Fourth of July in Putnam County. There was a lot of, um, a lot of fireworks being lit off in my neighborhood, to say the least, and I was one of the participants. I, I was kind of saddened that Interlaken wasn't able to put on their full event that they normally do, but we did get to show up. I'm not trying to steal your thunder, but got to go out there, and that was actually, I was, I was pleasantly surprised at the turnout that was there, especially on the fact that it rained that day. Otherwise, really have nothing, nothing to comment on. Things are moving well. I'm just about to get to the very end of the road with the, the Animal Services Building, and I think we're to the point now where we need to enlist the support of a, the blessing of an engineer to move this project forward. So, I'd like to have a conversation, but we'll probably talk about it this afternoon, if we can, the workshop with regards to Architect and Engineering Services, what we can do to keep the cost down and move this project forward and get rid of stick a shovel in the ground.
Look forward to that. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Harvey. Want to thank the Crescent City Yacht Club and all that were involved in the fireworks the Saturday before the weekend of Fourth of July. They really did a great job. It was really, as the Fourth of July event in Interlaken, it was really heavily attended. It was good to see people back out and, and interacting and, and being themselves. So, the fireworks were really good. I really want to thank Administrator Suggs, the staff, Chairman Harvey, JR, all the constitutional officers, Sheriff's Department, everybody was all the, and for preparing for the hurricane. We prepare for the worst and we hope for the best, and I think we got that. You do hate it for it to be in the path of anybody, so it did have some damage to the northwest of us and all the way through Georgia and up in the Carolinas, so you hate that. But JR, I just want to thank you. It was a trial run. I especially want to thank everybody for the contact that they had with all of the mayors. I spoke with Mayor Myers, Mayor Watts, and then Mayor Vinconda from Pomona Park, and they were, they were all very well informed. I know that Mayor Watts and Mayor Myers came to the EOC at least once or twice, and so they really know kind of what goes on, and they felt more of a part. So, I just want to bring thank yous from them and congratulations on a great job. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Adamsak?
So, I assume that's directed at my comments. So, what I will say is there's more than one means to shut a door, but I will also say that I have never not had staff or yourself or anyone not welcome me into their door when I did have questions. In this case, the particular subject I was talking about was something I was completely unaware of, that I couldn't have possibly had a question for you. And I wasn't actually incited, that portion of the conversation wasn't directed at you. The only thing directed at you was the comment about trust but verify, which I think all of us should be doing, which is a simple concept. So, if you took offense, that I apologize, but it was not meant that way to be offensive. It's meant to educate the public on the fact that we voted on something that we did not have awareness of ahead of time. I couldn't have possibly asked staff or anyone a question about it because I wasn't aware. So, if you think that that's appropriate, if you're aware, and I don't know if you were aware or not. So, if you are aware and you think it's appropriate not to share that with all of the commission, then there's a problem. But I don't know if you were aware or not. That's up to you to, to let us know that. But on something I meant to talk about is, given the situation that we've decided to do the budget the way we do, one thing that I wanted to discuss in that second day of the budgets is still the scales that I think we need at our weigh stations in Crescent City as well as Interlaken. I continue to drive around my community, and it's, I was trying to identify if there's a single dumping location that's the same, or we could contact the sheriff to be able to say, hey, they're dumping in the same spot. But there's three couches on my ride from here, from my home to here along State Road 20 currently. There is several different dump sites where you can see where someone backed up their truck and unloaded on side roads and side streets. And that, and I agree with our chairman when we had this discussion that I think if we had those weigh stations out locally, then we would have the opportunity for people not to go, it's coming off my truck no matter what, as, as you had mentioned. When they decide they don't want to pay the fee, and they drive out into the neighborhood and dump the stuff all over the ground somewhere. So, I, I'd like to see how we're incorporating that into the budget, what thoughts have been given into that, and I will email you that question as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everything's been pretty much adequately covered. I think that they do have some pricing on those scales that you're looking for in those two areas, so maybe we could go ahead and have a talk about that when y'all get a chance about what it costs to put them there. While that's definitely part of the budget, it's not the same. They pretty much have their own money and generate their own money. So, as long as we can fit it within what you want to do within their, their budget that's a little separate, then it could probably get done. That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll say this, Mr. Adamsak, Mr. Tilton caught me, I believe it was yesterday, and told me that he had probably solved the solution for the scales for the west end and the south end. But we will put that on the next workshop and have Mr. Tilton come in and talk about that, because I think it's very important. Do you want to say thank you to the EOC, JR, and staff? I hope this is the last trial run, and I hope we don't even have a full run, truly. But I, I was so impressed with staff, every person that attended that was there, either by in-person or by Zoom, the level of participation. And I want to say this because I think it deserves to be said as a daylight today. I don't govern by Facebook, and I'm tired of people asking me about that. I have reporters that ask me, don't you read it? No, I don't read it. I don't read the seven responses out of 74,500 people, because I sit at the table. I sit at the table where we talk about that one person that's sitting out there that's flooded, that can't get out of their home, and how can we solve that problem? That's the table I sit at, and I sit with some fine individuals that make that happen. And when people think we're not concerned about their one area, we are concerned, because we debate that. We talk about it. We ask, what's the solution? How can we fix it? Those are the things we talk about. And I, and I really appreciate JR, you and your staff, and you're a great bunch of people. It was my honor to sit there for the days that I sat there. Thank God I wasn't on a cruise this year, like I was four years ago, and I couldn't get back from Mexico. Go figure, right? I'll leave that comment alone, because I really was so frustrated for not getting back. But I just saw the level of attentiveness and the level of professionalism that exists out there, and other people have saw it too. So, and I want to thank you all for doing that. I would go remiss without thanking everybody to, who attended and could attend and helped with the Interlaken Independence Day celebration. It was a great opportunity. It was just a lot of fun. And a lot of people came out regardless of fireworks that could not happen. They still have not arrived from China yet, still on that slow boat. But it was good. It was good. Mr. Suggs learned that the parade route's in a circle, because the same people that were on one side, they come running over to the next side. So, they double up on candy, but that's fine. That's part of the, the fun out there. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. Do want to thank publicly Lee and Nicole and Desiree and Julianne, your staff. Truly, during the EOC, Julianne sitting with her feet in a chair, laptop going, working hard on getting this agenda out. Lee and, and Desiree and Nicole would come over and, and help out. It was just a blessing to see people trying to get this out, because as you know, we didn't have Sarah, and we migrated to a new program, and your understanding of not getting that out. Remember, when I first got here, we didn't get the packets till almost Monday before the Tuesday meeting. Now, we get them a week ahead of time, and that's a good thing. But they were diligently working hard as they could with all the other things they had to do to get those out. Julianne, thank you, and I know, I hope Lee's watching. And I want to say this about your staff. The proclamations that were done to the resolutions, you know, they, they're the ones that put that paper together with Leo over there in Mr. Siophie's office. They're the ones that wanted your names on it. They're the ones that got the, the frames and got them out and made sure that everything was done for a proper presentation today. And you saw them. They were chasing y'all down when you got here this morning to get those signatures, so that, so our, our honorees could walk out with something in hand that really meant something. And last thing I want to touch on, some of you commissioners are going to hear from James Cuneo about Chimera Way. Chimera Way is all the way at the end of Holloway Road. I know he's contacted Commissioner Pickens through Parks and Recreation. This is not a county road. This is a private easement down. We had a title search done. Mr. Will Height did the title search, found no proof that the county ever took that in, so we have no ownership. I was kind of hoping we did, but it turned out we didn't. And Mr. Commando, if, I asked you earlier if you would, little spout on that, so, because that name, that's going to keep coming up until we put this to bed. Mr. Commando?
Everything you said's correct. If we don't own it, there's nothing legally that we're, we can't just go onto somebody else's property and start doing work.
The issue is that Interlaken Lake Estates, when they developed from George's Lake all the way to Rodman Reservoir, just about different areas, designed areas to have lake access for public use. But the board back then never took in all the roads out in that area. So, it's not a road, and it's nothing owned by the county. Mr. Cuneo would like us to own that. He would like us to create a boat ramp. He would like us to have a public park, but truly, on their deeds, they have, I don't know about all the deeds, but the deeds I saw clearly say that this property, that property in question is for the use of the public. So, if they have a neighborhood dispute going on, that's between them, because one guy does want to fence that easement off, but that's a private matter. That is nothing we, this board's going to do, but you're going to hear more of it. And Mr. Pickens, I saw you, you put your light on there, but I think he's already contacted you.
Yes, he did, and we went on and looked at it. So, when you say it's private, who actually owns it? Is it the homeowners association, or is it, I mean, who actually owns it? You said private, so it's, and he wanted us to take it in, and, and they would, he was, they would maintain it and everything, and it's, it's not a very big road. There's not much of a ramp there either, I can tell you. But, so the ownership is, is private, but what private entity owns it?
I thought it was, I'm trying to look at the deeds right now. It was an easement. I think it's owned by the adjacent property owners.
No, it's, it's, according to the GIS map, it's owned by, out into the lake. It goes with the property out in the lake, and the two landowners on the side are separate from it.
The lake is privately owned?
I believe we own the bottom of the lake in that spot, and that, that is part of the cutout for the lake, for that piece of property, from what I viewed on the appraiser site. So, we may want to talk to property appraiser.
Regardless of what's on the property appraiser site, repairing rights are completely different legal issue. But as far as that easement's concerned, we've checked three different ways. We don't own that. I mean, just because it was part of a platted map, his argument, just so we're clear, but his argument's that the platted map says that that area's for public use. Just because it says it's for public use doesn't mean that we own it.
And even if we did own it, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a road. County owns a lot of property that was not a road.
I think if you go back and talk to all the people that we've told who are not taking anything new in the system right now.
Again, we don't own it. Even if, so if we owned it, we would have a conversation. We don't, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, that, you might be getting phone calls, because the only way I can talk to you really about matters is here. Mr. Suggs, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, on this very item. I had made some conversation, I had some conversation, and I needed to do some follow-up now that we got all the information back in. But hearing this conversation at Adias today, I had a plan on putting this on your next available transportation agenda, just for this very discussion. Hearing what I'm hearing here today, I don't know if it's necessary to put it back on the agenda, just have this conversation again. So, I'll reach out to the folks that I had promised that we would put it on the next available transportation agenda, and let them know that, where we stand with it, where the commission stands with it, and, and go from there.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the end of my comments.
Can it be blocked off? But I guess it would be a civil suit against them. Okay, all right, I'm good with it.
That ends my comments, so we're going to move into the public comment on miscellaneous items. I do have a few blue cards here. Mrs. Buckner? Okay, you're in the audience. I see, but we're having your conversation at two o'clock today?
Okay.
Okay, so would you rather speak now or speak at two o'clock, or both?
I just want an update.
Okay, you're going to hear that at two o'clock today. But, but you're more than welcome to speak.
No, I can wait.
Okay, okay, then we'll see you at two o'clock. Frederick Freeze, Senior, Boswick Schoolhouse. Yes, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Harvey, commissioners. My name is Frederick Freeze, Senior. I live on 123 El Prado Court in the Boswick area of our county. And I wanted to speak to you about the wonderful anniversary that's coming up this year for the old Boswick Schoolhouse. You know, I, I have a real fondness for history, and this morning, as I noticed, the signage was presented noting some of our incorporated history that's part of this county, and it's a, it's a wonderful thread that keeps getting woven together. And I, I commend that action on history. I love to look at history, especially of this county. When my wife Linda and I moved here, I guess almost, almost 12 years now, after we registered to vote, the other thing we did was to go get a library card, and that brought us to the old Boswick Schoolhouse, and we signed up for our library card. One of the next things I wanted to do was find out about the history of this county. And it was recommended to me to first read The River Flows North, and I found that was exceptional. Since then, I've been doing a lot of other reading. We talk about Mr. Bertram, a Pennsylvania Quaker, who toured around this wonderful state, made some great observations. One of the things that I enjoy most is getting back into the library. It's been a great resource for my family. Before we could connect with any type of internet, a lot of the information we could get was at the library. And of course, our resource of books. I also noticed that that schoolhouse incorporated the ability for children who would sit outside with their laptops because they did not have any internet. Well, that schoolhouse, that schoolhouse, that house is a library now, has a wonderful history. Built back in 1921, I think back, it sounds like history, but then I realized, tack on 20 years, and I started my history. So, maybe, you know, history is relative. But back in December of 2007, the Boswick School was designated as an historic site on the National Registry. I think that's a great honor. I think one of us, all, all of us have enjoyed going to the libraries, and especially a local library.
Mr. Freeze, if you could wrap it up pretty soon?
Okay. One of the things I'd like to see accomplished One of the things I'd like to see accomplished is that the library be recognized by the county in terms of this special occasion, their anniversary, 100th. And certainly would love to show off the historical sense of that school. And also possibly, maybe some of you could come and visit us as we celebrate on the 31st. It'll also be a back-to-school day for a lot of the kids. Some wonderful things took place there. I haven't been able to get upstairs to see where the stage area is, but I can recall when I was a youngster, going to school and going up on a stage for the first time was the biggest stage fright I could ever remember. And so I'd love to see that area.
Thank you, Mr. Fries.
Thank you so much. And you are invited to come celebrate with us.
We look forward to it.
Mr. Fries, thank you for not bringing up El Prado Court.
I don't know whether it's a court or a waterway. I haven't decided who I have to contact.
Well, if you're in Baker County, they're getting their house by jet skis.
You mentioned the upstairs, and I was at the community association meeting last night in Boswick. That topic was brought up about the fact that the second floor is not accessible, but apparently it was reinforced at some time in the early 2000s, and there's really no reason why it should not be accessible to the public. So I believe we're going to be having more of this conversation here shortly. But for the commission's identification, the citizens in Boswick would like to be able to access the second floor during the celebration for four or five hours for people that want to come in and see the old schoolhouse. I guess they have people that actually went to school there at some point in their lives. So the request was made to bring it up. I'm sure you have probably multiple cars, but...
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. I've heard people talk about it, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Next speaker, Betsy Rayner.
You're going to pick up where we left off.
You're right. I'm Betsy Rainey. I live at 280 Palmetto Bluff Road in Boswick, and I am the president of the Boswick Library Friends. And I came to invite you to our centennial celebration on July 31st from 10 until 12:30 at the library. We're going to have some fun there. We're going to have the old games that the kids played when they were there at the school, hopscotch and jump rope and jacks and red light, green light. So we will go back in history a little bit as far as the activities of the kids. We will also have a memory book with pictures of past classes and what the library looked like, and what it looked like when we first started to restore it, and what it looks like now. We will also have a tour of the library, given by Claudia Wilkinson and Charlie Wilkinson. Charlie went to the old school, and their daughter was in the last kindergarten class of the old school. In that tour, we would like to go upstairs. We have asked the library executive and also Julianne permission to go upstairs, and we've been told that it is unsafe. When we went into the process of restoration, we got three grants from the state, and the restoration took place in two phases. The first phase, we wanted to restore the old school in total, but we didn't have enough money. So the first phase was $350,000 from the state, and in that first phase, we installed structural steel, hoping that the upstairs would be able to hold books, assemblies, meetings, plays, whatever. And so we prepared for that. It hasn't happened yet, but when it does happen, we're ready. I have documents here of the description of the structural steel. I brought enough for all of you if you need them. Am I out of time?
You are, but that's okay. I'm going to, I think we need to answer the question real quick, because that is the question on the table. So I'm going to, if you will, I'm going to let Julianne speak to that real quick, okay? Mr. Rawls, you got, but I'll let Julianne go first.
Well, before she answers, I got a question. I'm misunderstanding you maybe. The work was never done when y'all got the $350,000?
Oh, no, we have not, we have not restored the upstairs, because we didn't have the money.
Okay, I'm going to ask Julianne, then I'll come back to Commissioner Rawls, okay? Julianne, and you?
Good morning, commissioners. I received the request from the Boswick Library Friends to open it up for tours, and I had Mr. Siafi assist me in determining if that occupancy was safe, as Ms. Stella's records record that it is not safe for occupancy. And Mr. Siafi reported back that the building had been renovated in 2007 for first floor only. The permit clearly states the second floor is unfinished space and not approved for use or occupancy. I explained to Ms. Rainey that at this time, we have to be concerned with public safety first, and it is not rated for occupancy, and I could not allow such tours to be held. She did reference some additional reports, and I offered to review the reports if she provided the information, as well as have Mr. Siafi involved. However, those reports have not been received to me to this time, and as such, we still do not have any information that would declare it safe for any occupancy above the first floor.
Mr. Siafi, would I like to give you an opportunity? You went out there. Ms. Rainey, may he have the microphone, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
No, sir, I did not go out there. I went off the permit history. Ms. Julianne Young stated 2007 renovation, first floor only, no access to the second floor, was not finished, was not completed, is not deemed, you cannot occupy that space.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls, you have the floor.
So that answers my question, the steel that you referenced was never put in?
Oh, yes, it was. It was done in the first, in the first phase of the restoration. I have here, could I give you these?
I guess where my confusion's coming is there's restoration, and then there's supporting the second floor. Was the second floor fortified to support something, and then y'all just never finished the upstairs?
Correct.
Because when I hear restoration, what goes in my mind is, you know, you might have carpentry, you might have painting, stuff like that that needs to be done to restore it.
Correct.
But I guess where I'm driving to, at one point in the conversation that she had with me, was that there was a letter from a prior building official that said that it was safe to use for storage, assembly, and they could put books upstairs essentially, using it as a warehouse space. And looking at the loading on that versus humans, the question that came in my mind was, why wouldn't you be allowed to use it if you're allowed to use it for storage?
I, could I, could I tell you something?
Yes, ma'am.
This is from Paul Myers. On November 20th, 2006, he sent this final inspection and answer to questions to Ken Smith and Rick Leary.
What was the date of that?
November 20th, 2006.
I thought the permit was 2007. Okay.
Okay.
One of the questions that he answered, well, he has three questions about the upstairs. One was, would the code allow the upstairs area of the library to be used as a stack room? He said yes, and there's a paragraph that follows that, and he explains that. The next one is, would the code allow for the upstairs area of the library to be used as storage? Yes, and he explains that. The next one is, would the code allow for the upstairs area of the library to be used as assembly? Yes. This is when it gets restored, but the reason that he said yes is because of the structural steel that was installed in the first phase of the building. Then the last one is, would the code allow for the upstairs area of the library to be barricaded and closed to the public? And he says yes, which is what happened. And I know I haven't been up there in 10 years. I don't even know what it looks like now. But I have copies of this if anyone would want to look at it.
Mr. Turner, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a big difference between ask, could it, under proper circumstances, be used for one of those three situations? I'm not saying that it is, I've never been in there before and looked at it. But I have to trust my building official when he says, "We cannot occupy this right now, it's a county building, it's unsafe." So if we want to occupy it, the next step would be, I'm sorry, ma'am, but that's what he says, so you just...
I'm not asking to occupy it.
Okay, miss, wait, wait.
Well, I'm not going to, ma'am, I'm not going to try and debate you on this. I'm trying to find the help to resolve this issue. The only thing we can do is get the building department to go out there and look and see if the work that was done previously brought it up to code to where it could be occupied. Or is it at least safe enough that you can get up there and look around for an afternoon and not tell anybody? I'm just telling you that you're not, that you can't occupy it. You can't occupy it unless he says you can occupy it.
So just to clarify, all these questions are questions we get on every project. Can I do this? Can I do that? Absolutely, you can do any of those things, but you have to meet certain parameters. In this case, it appears from the record, those parameters weren't met. We chose to close the second floor instead of spend extra money, so that is an attic space right now. Was the reshoring to keep the roof safe, or was the reshoring done to make it, to have live load on it? I don't know those questions. I'd have to pull the old history. They're archived, I can definitely do that. But you would need an engineer to go through that building right now to evaluate the structure and give me a report stating its occupation means walking up there for 30 seconds or three hours. Doesn't matter the timeframe, it means if a person's going to be on that deck, is it safe for them to be there?
And with the county built, with it being a county building, that would make us liable if anything did happen, so...
And I serve on the County Trust Association, and I can tell you that we don't need that liability right now. If we can, if an engineer said it was fine, then that's one thing. But thank you for your comments. We'll see you on July 31st. And I don't know if I can do hopscotch anymore, but, and jacks, I have...
I can do red light, I don't know about the green light.
But thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Bobby Wilson. Would you like to speak?
I'm going to wait until...
You're going to wait till 2:00? Okay, good deal.
We will not be serving lunch on this flight.
Ms. Reyes, you have, you filled out a card? You don't have to fill out a card to speak to us, but you did. So I think you heard the update from Commissioner Rawls.
Yeah, but I thought of something else.
Okay. Is it concerning?
No.
Okay.
I'm coming back at 2:00. Yvette Reyes, P.O., Box 253, Boswick. The ditch is at my parents' house. It's been...
Can you speak in the microphone?
I have been...
You can pull it forward.
A thorn on everybody's side in Public Works. Last conversation I had, I can't remember the guy's name, was that you had four people quit, and there's nobody to clean the ditches. So my question is, have we hired people? Is there someone that can come out over...
What's the area you're talking about?
East Palaca. East Palaca, 142 St. Cristobal Avenue.
District 3.
Yeah, District 3.
I thought I was in the right area in my mind.
Yeah, so the old theater road.
Right.
It's still county maintained, even though it's closed. It is grown out, and like I said, I was told that four people quit the same day, there was no staff, so do we have staff now? Is there some way that we can get somebody out there to clean out the ditches so that it's not so grown out, and we could get this water moving?
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
You may, Mr. Turner.
The problem in this area is it's dead flat, and there's nowhere for the water to go. And Public Works has diligently worked over there in that area in the last three years. You can say what you want of it, but they have. Mike Rodriguez spent a lot of time out there looking and figuring and trying to clean this out, that. He never got the water running, even when he did go dig out all them ditches, and when he fixed that culvert going toward the fairgrounds. All this stuff, he did all that stuff thinking that maybe...
I'm not saying that he did. Excuse me, I'm not saying that he did.
Maybe one of them would help, you know, that's what he's trying to...
It's not going to help. The water issue's not going to be...
Ms. Reyes, Mr. Turner, listen to you. Let him, let him talk.
If he read the emails, then he wouldn't be telling me that that's not what happened. I know what Mike did, what both Mikes have done. They've done a lot of work out there. I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing that. I'm asking for somebody to go out and clean the ditches now. That's all I'm asking.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, that.
The ditches have water in them, but it's not water on the road, correct?
No, it's not water in the road. I don't, I'm not talking about the water. I'm talking about getting all the brush out of the side of the ditches, like regular maintenance, regular road maintenance.
Only because you're the person here in front of me, and I'll take this opportunity to say what I've told a lot of residents in my area as well, is we have roads that are somewhat impassable at this point, and we have roads that need grading, that need ditches in order to allow the road to operate properly. And I absolutely cannot justify asking Mr. Troxell to come off, and I've told people in my area the same thing. I can't justify asking him to pull people off, because we are short-staffed a bit, of those type situations to address waters in the roads. Now, general maintenance, should that be done? Yeah, probably off-season. But I just want to leave, this commissioner is not going to ask him to pull people off of flooding situations where we actually can't use roads and stuff.
I'm just asking if we have the staff to go out and do it right now. Yes or no?
The answer's no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else from the public would like to speak before we end our public comment? And seeing none, this meeting is recessed until 5:05.